Welcome. This meeting was officially opened already as the board had voted at 5 o'clock to go into executive session, so we are returning from that. However, this evening, we would like to begin with a moment of silence in recognition and remembrance of the children and teachers who were murdered in the tragic shooting at an elementary school in Uvalde, Texas yesterday. We'll now move on to accept agenda, agenda changes. Before I read the recommended action, we do have one recommended change, and that is to add the memorandum of agreement between the Garrison Union Free School District and the Garrison Teachers Association. We're going to add that between old business and the second public comment section, so that will go between 9 and 10, and will become item 10, and it will become item A. All right? Is that clear for all the board members? We got that?
I'm sorry. It'll be between, it'll be after 8 before 9.
Excuse me. Before, after 8 before 9. And for everyone, Dusty's not with us this evening. Courtney is filling in as our clerk pro tem and was appointed earlier this evening. Okay. So, may I have a motion, please? Oh, wait. Be resolved, the Board of Education of the Garrison Union Free School District does hereby accept the agenda as amended. May I have a motion, please?
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay's? Abstentions? That brings us to the discussion and adoption of the amended 2223 budget. Let me begin this evening. Do you have me? The administrative team and board worked together this past week to determine a path forward following the May 17 vote. We will put forward a second budget for a vote on Tuesday, June 21. We have listened to the no votes in the Garrison community and reduced the budget to $12,105,601.94, which requires a 6.6 levy increase. To be clear, we needed the 9.18 levy increase to fund our program and absorb the large increases in health insurance, special education, and transportation. The reduced budget we are proposing for the second budget vote includes cuts next year, which Carl and Joe are going to fully explain. High school tuition is no longer listed as an increase year over year. On May 17, voters approved a proposition that will allow the district to enter a multi-year contract with Highland Falls Fort Montgomery School District and establish a base rate tuition that will increase by CPI or 2%, whichever is less in subsequent years. The Haldane School District has agreed to a similar contract. On June 21, we will place a proposition on the ballot to allow Garrison District to enter this contract. We have a verbal agreement with both districts that the rates for high school will be the same and will increase at the same rate for the next few years. On behalf of the Garrison Board of Education, I wish to thank both districts for working with us to put students first and preserve our longstanding tradition of allowing students to choose between two stellar high schools. I also wish to emphasize that while appreciated and great news for our community, the high school tuition stabilization does not solve our budget shortfall, nor was this our neighboring community's problem to solve. In order to reduce the tax levy to the 6.6 number, we will propose, we still need to make some cuts. To get to 6.6 from the 9.18 we initially proposed, we're proposing removing about 250,000 from next year's budget. Those cuts will allow us to present to the community a budget we feel listens to concerns but maintains the quality of our school. The reduction in tuition from Haldane accounts for part of the 250,000, but we will also be proposing the following, which we will achieve in large part through the gracious partnership of our teachers and our administrators. First is a freeze on all administrative salaries. The second is a freeze on all teacher cost of living increases for next year. None of the cuts were in our original budget because frankly, given the amazing work the Garrison community does, the board did not believe they were deserved. That said, the community has spoken, and the board is hopeful that these sacrifices show the community that we are listening. But there are limits on what we can do without significantly impacting our students and staff. Quite frankly, these cuts are tough to stomach, but it's important for the community to get the full story on why we feel that way. Let's begin with our administrative team. We have a superintendent, a building principal, a business administrator, and a director of technology innovation. We have a superintendent with over 30 years of educational experience. Our superintendent's pay ranks 43 out of the 47 districts in Westchester, Putnam, and Rockland Counties, including the Bosse's district. Yet he has agreed to freeze his pay while multiple districts in the area are looking to fill administrative positions. We have one building principal for both our elementary and middle schools due to our size. Our neighboring districts have separate elementary and middle school principals, but we hired an experienced middle school principal whose salary ranked 78 out of 95 elementary school principals in Westchester, Putnam, and Rockland Counties. She is one of three districts, including Bosse's, that serves elementary and middle school, and she has agreed to a pay freeze. Last year, we shifted our technology model from a 10-month teacher on special assignment who is paid additional overtime for summer work, as this is the time technology needs to be prepared for the coming school year, to a 12-month position, a Director of Technology and Innovation. This position allowed us to reduce our reliance on our outside contractor, Edutec, for our technology needs. In addition to overseeing all of the technology operations of the district, this position provides instruction and professional development support for our staff. This position is responsible for our data reporting to New York State. It includes, this includes all the transfer of student data to New York SED and ensuring the district is 2D compliant. This position also serves as a Chief Information Officer and Data Privacy Officer. If eliminated, we would need to turn back to outside contractors for technology and delivery of professional development. Not all of the districts in Putnam, Westchester, and Rockland report on salaries for this position, but from the data available, our DOT ranks 23 out of 31, including Bosse's. He has agreed to a pay freeze. How the district handles our data matters. It was cited in our internal audit and our external audit. Our audits are public record and posted to the district website. If you have questions about what the business office does, please start by reading the internal audit completed last year. We did add a treasurer position to the business office last year in response to a charge from the external audits. This did not change the total headcount. There are still three employees in the business office, and our business administrator's pay ranks 46 out of 47 in Westchester, Putnam, and Rockland Counties. Our business administrator, like all of our administrators, has agreed to a pay freeze. We eliminated the Director of Facilities and Transportation position this year and moved to a model where we pay employees stipends for the additional work. This saves the district about 60,000 annually. Throughout this process, we have been looking for efficiencies, and we will continue to do so. Our admin team, our business office, our bus drivers, our aides and custodial staff, they are here to support our teachers. We have an experienced, talented staff of teachers who work to change and grow as new ideas in education are introduced and state requirements change. They embrace professional development and actively contribute to shaping how our district moves forward, from selecting a new math curriculum to lending their experience and training to our vision for education and Garrison. This is not an easy teaching assignment. In many cases, we have a single elementary teacher per grade. They do not have colleagues teaching the same curriculum to consult. As a district, we have invested in professional development for our teachers so they are able to deliver our new Envision math curriculum and our Teachers College of Reading and Writing Literacy curriculum. We've invested in a K-8 science teacher to support our STEAM environmental science curriculum across all grades that aligns with the state standards. We do not have big departments for colleagues to discuss new ideas. Our middle, in our middle school, our teachers are responsible for three grade levels. In larger districts, they would likely teach one grade level. Our model requires additional planning. Yet when we asked our middle school teachers to take on response to intervention in their subject areas next year so we could eliminate a staff position and minimize budget impacts, they embraced the new model. Our teachers, who are facing the same pressures of inflation as our community, offered to forego their cost of living increase for next year. Without our teachers, administrators, and support staff, we will not be able to provide an educational experience that aligns with the vision of the graduate, which was created with teacher, parent, admin, and community input. We will not meet the state standards. So 6.6 with minimal staff cuts is what we are hoping the community will support. We will need 60% plus one vote on June 21 to get there. If we don't, then we go into contingency. This isn't a scare tactic. This is the truth. A contingency budget will gut the quality of this school to a point where it will take years to recover. Under a contingency budget, the district cannot increase the levy over the 2021-2022 school year amount. While the contingency budget will not impact high school choice, we will need to pay for the additional costs due to special education, health insurance, and transportation with the same budget we had this year. We will still need to pay for a larger class to attend the high school of their choice. We do not have accessible fund balance to turn to for these large increases. We used fund balance in previous years, working to avoid an override vote for as long as we could. Our expenses have risen year over year, and we have used fund balance to cover the gap. The fund balance, to a large degree, was our rainy day fund, and if you will pardon the inadequate metaphor, given the tragic scope, COVID, to a large degree, represented that rainy day. We kept our doors open through COVID with fund balance. We are using $601,506 from fund balance for the 2022-2023 budget already, and we only have $668,901 in the undesignated fund. If the vote fails, a contingency budget will cut transportation within two miles of the school district. This is the only legal cut we can make to transportation. A contingency budget eliminates one elementary teacher. A contingency budget eliminates the K-8 environmental science teacher. A contingency budget cuts art, music, chorus, theater, and STEAM courses. Those cuts represent five professional staff, including union employees and artists and residents. It replaces these courses with study halls. The classroom teachers cannot cover these periods, as this is their planning time. Thus, the district would need to hire a monitor for the study halls. The district would be out of compliance with New York SED requirements in these subject areas. A contingency budget cuts one administrative position. This is not a full savings, as the district would need to hire outside contractors to fulfill required duties. A contingency budget cuts the school psychologist. The district would need to contract out for psychological evaluations. Like many of the positions on this list, it is not a full savings. The classroom teachers and other existing staff would also need to cover portions of this position. A contingency budget cuts modified sports. We must pay the health insurance for our active employees and our retirees. We must fulfill our legal obligations to our special education students, including those placed out of district. Going for a new transportation contract will likely result in a higher bid, given the market. It is not a feasible solution. Please keep in mind that every district around us received an increase in state aid. They are looking to spend. We are competing with these districts for staff, including drivers, teachers, and administrators. This is the reality if the proposed budget fails on June 21. We do not want anyone to feel that they do not understand the consequences of their vote or failure to vote on June 21. As I said before, there are cuts in the new budget proposed for a vote on June 21. This budget will still need a 60% majority to pass. Not everyone will agree with what we've decided to cut. This is not about appeasing one group of no voters. If you vote no on June 21 because you had a different list of cuts in mind, I ask you to please consider what we stand to lose on a contingency budget. This is not a menu of possible cuts. Those are the cuts. With this in mind, and the threat of contingency looming, we have put together a new budget for the public to consider. We relied on our administrative team's experience and our legal counsel when making these decisions. As board members, we applied our insight into the community. We hope that the community feels heard. We hope that you recognize the value in what this budget funds. However, we must adopt this budget tonight in order to hold a revote on June 21. We do not have time, per the requirements set by the state, for informal budget discussions with the community. After tonight, this will be the budget we, as a community, vote yes or no on come June 21. If you vote yes, you will be voting for preserving eight staff, maintaining transportation within the two-mile radius of the school, maintaining our arts program, and maintaining our sports program. If you vote no on June 21, you will be voting for cuts of eight staff, transportation, sports, and the arts. This is not a menu. Again, these are the cuts that are necessary to get us down to the level to absorb the increases that we have in health insurance, special education, and transportation, and not all of those cuts zero out, as there are some things we will then need to go out for. Before I turn this presentation over to Carl and Joe, I want to invite everyone to come to the band and chorus performance tomorrow. Here are programming for yourself. The doors to the school have been closed, excuse me, for two years due to COVID. Come see our program in action. Tomorrow's performance is a credit to the students and the band. But also, excuse me, the administrators that have worked so hard to pivot to a new model to provide musical instruction through the Bosse's, artists and residents, and work to hire talented, experienced individuals. The music program also engages our students in enrichment courses while their classroom teachers plan future lessons. The band instructor, the administrators, the teachers, they are pieces of a puzzle that form the Garrison experience. To go to contingency breaks apart everything in that puzzle. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Carl and Joe now.
So on May 17, the Garrison voters rejected the proposed tax levy increase. This vote was very close. It was a tie vote of 314 to 314, but we needed a 60% supermajority. So we have decided, together with the board, to present a new budget. It reduces the budget draft from $12,364,000 to $12,105,000, and that lowers the tax levy from 9.18 to 6.6. We have received a tentative agreement to enter into multi-year contracts with both of the school districts that have our high school students. That's going to increase by 2% or CPI, whichever is less. That is good, because that mirrors the New York State tax cap formula, which will help to make the high school tuition expenses more manageable. And those tuition contracts, the drafts, are identical, and that will eliminate the pressure that we had to go to one high school. So it's important to mention that, just like the first vote, there's a second proposition. In order for us to enter a multi-year contract with Haldane, we have to ask for permission from the public to approve that request. If we are not successful in getting a approval of Proposition 2, we will not be able to enter into a multi-year agreement with Haldane. This is the same kind of proposition that was for the first vote for Highland Falls, and this has the potential for reducing the burden on the taxpayer for the future. So with the 6.6% tax levy increase, we did have to make some cuts. We do have a reduction due to Haldane's agreement to level out the tuition, and that amounts to 170,000, 107,000 in savings. We have an agreement from the superintendent, myself, and the other administrators to freeze our salaries for this year into next year. And we have an agreement from the Teachers Association to not seek any additional salary increases beyond what's contractually obligated in their existing contract for next year, and that amounts to 70,000 in savings. We are eliminating part-time music teacher, eliminating our field trip budget, eliminating starting up the school lunch program, and the land-to-learn program that maintains the So what we want to do is talk a little bit about what does this mean? So a house that is valued at 500,000 would see an increase of $322 per year in their school taxes. That's less than $1 a day. How does it change your taxes in Phillips Town? A house in Phillips Town that's valued at 500,000 is actually assessed at 223,000 because there's a 44% equalization rate. Your '21-'22 taxes for that house would be $4,875, and the '22-'23 school taxes would be estimated at $5,197. In Putnam Valley, a house valued at 500,000 is assessed at 500,000. Your school taxes in '21-'22 would be $4,875, and in '22-'23, they would be $5,197. So a contingent budget is 0% tax increase. Our contingent budget is $11,447,246, and that requires 642,000 of additional reductions. So the contingent budget, as Sarah mentioned, it's a different, it's a different kind of school. So we're, we very much want to make it clear that we don't have a, have a choice in this matter. We have to deliver a budget that is a zero. In order to do that, we have to make a number of cuts. That is, all of the modified sports, including all the transportation that is included with that. Eliminating transportation for any students within a two-mile radius of the school. So that doesn't affect just those students within the two-mile radius. That also affects all the rest of the students, because by eliminating a bus, the rest, the remaining bus runs are longer, and it affects both the high school and the elementary school students. We eliminate one elementary teacher position, one art teacher position. All of the band, chorus, and theater is eliminated. One school psychologist, DBT. One environmental science teaching position, and the Director of Technology. There are some additional costs that are required in order to make these conditions work. We are, we do have the cost of an additional aid in the budget, as well as a cost to farm out some of the services for the Director of Technology, but it doesn't deliver the So the important dates to remember for the calendar is, a modified newsletter is going to be mailed out on Friday, June 10. We have another hearing on June 14, and a second vote is from 7 to 9 on Tuesday, the Are there any questions?
Questions from the board regarding the budget as presented? Okay. We're going to, thank you, Joe. Appreciate the presentation. If there are no further, I'll move this closer. If there are no further questions, I'm going to move to the recommended action. Be it resolved that under the provisions of the New York State Education Law, the Garrison Union Free School District Board of Education hereby adopts an amended budget in the amount of $12,105,601.94 for the 2022-2023 school year, and authorizes the district clerk to cause a notice to be published in compliance with the New York State Education Law that the school budget revote will be held at a special meeting of the district on June 21, 2022, between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. May I have a motion, please?
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay's? Abstentions? Thank you. We will now move to the request for approval to amend property tax report card. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Garrison Union Free School District hereby amends the 2022-2023 property tax report card previously adopted on April 19, 2022, and hereby approves the amended 2022-2023 property tax report card as presented at this meeting. Do I have any questions on the property tax report card? May I have a motion, please?
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay's? Next, we have a request for approval of proposition to be placed on the ballot of the special meeting of the district on June 21, 2022. Be resolved that the Board of Education of the Garrison Union Free School District hereby authorizes the following proposition to be placed on the ballot for voter consideration at the special meeting of the district on June 21, 2022. Proposition 2. Authorization of instructional contract. Shall the Board of Education of the Garrison Union Free School District be authorized to contract for a period of not less than two and not more than five years with the Haldane Central School District for the purpose of educating Garrison students in grades 9 through 12, and to provide the necessary transportation for such students? May I have a motion, please?
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay's? We have now reached the public comment section of this evening. Public comment is intended for members of the community to speak openly and voice concerns. In accordance with Policy 3220 of the Garrison Union Free School District, any person wishing to speak shall comply with all provisions of this policy. Comments, did you, oh, got it. Comments, excuse me, about specific school personnel or individual students is a violation of board policy. Concerns regarding students or personnel should be discussed privately with the superintendent or appropriate administrator. Comments should be limited to three minutes, and speakers are asked to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. The board will listen to comments but will not engage in dialogue. Any necessary follow-up will be noted and provided through the appropriate channel. Members wishing to speak during the public comment period are asked to place their name and town of residence on the sign-in, and will be called in speaking order. I now have the sign-up here. It is still open, however, if you wish to add your name. I'm going to begin with welcoming Lauren Johnson to the podium, please. Oh, we have a mic here. I'm sorry, Lauren, you can choose your spot.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Johnson, and today I'm speaking on behalf as the co-president of the Garrison Teachers Association. First, I want to thank the board on behalf of the GTA First, I want to thank the board on behalf of the GTA for putting forward budgets that are looking at the here and now and the future of the district. The investment in the Capitol project and your support for instructional programs before and throughout the COVID pandemic has helped us to provide for much-needed repairs to the building, to create a place rich with learning during an unprecedented time. We know this work is not over as the repairs needed on the building are even beyond the scope of the project and we are still living with the lasting effects of the pandemic. This has created a safe space for students in Garrison in a world that we are as often confusing to us as adults. We understand that you have had now to had the most difficult task in front of you. As you continue to look at next steps, we have faith that the board will continue to do whatever they can to retain the faculty and staff to help continue your commitment to Garrison School by investing what is best for student learning and programming. This includes a focus on students emotional, social, emotional well-being, and we feel this is especially important after yesterday's tragic events in Texas. The reality is the continued cuts to this K-8 program will have lasting effects on future generations of students that we haven't even opened our doors to yet. This has to be considered as we, as a community, look at what we're going to do and what we're going to take away from students and children as we look at budgets. The faculty and staff here are some of the most dedicated people I have ever met. I've been here 20 years. I know I don't look it, but I have. Their dedication to the children of this community has always been unparalleled. And during the last years, even when it's been a great personal risk to their own health and safety, they have really gone above and beyond. This did not, they didn't do this for glory. They did it to help kids. Some of these are the same people that today were told that in three weeks, their home might not be Garrison anymore. With financial circumstances as they are, the Garrison Teachers Association voted this afternoon to do our part and forego a salary increase next year. We're feeling it too. But these are the very stuff who helped to keep the doors open, they keep kids safe every day, and they help students learn and thrive here in Garrison School. And, but we also understand the financial needs of the community. We do this to further support the children of Garrison. We thank this community, and I'm really speaking to you. We thank this community for already coming out to vote. You already came out once prior to your next visit. We encourage you to ask questions. We encourage you to come learn about the important initiatives and instruction that's happening here at Garrison. You will see the worth of your support at the polls and the smiling faces of children are thriving due to the strength of this community and your investment in public schools for years to come.
Next up, I have Jesse Lunen-Pack.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jesse Lunen-Pack. My son Gabriel is in 10th grade at Hal-Dane High School and my son Seth is in 8th grade here at Garrison. First of all, thank you to the board for what must have been a, and administration for must have been a tremendous lift over the last week to put this new budget together. Among my other volunteer activities, I am a community member on the audit committee of the district. So I know a little bit about the district finances and that was a huge lift you guys did, so thank you. I'm here tonight in my Garrison School fleece pullover that I purchased when I was watching Gabe play modified basketball in this gymnasium. Gabe had just moved here from another district and he had no friends. And he joined the basketball team and suddenly he had a dozen friends. That is a program that will be eliminated if we don't pass this budget. Tomorrow night, I'll be here to listen to Seth play the French horn in the concert here. Two weeks ago or last week, Seth auditioned for the New York State School Music Association Festival up in Wappingers Falls. His audition time was at 8:45 p.m. on a Friday night. And when we walked into the high school in Wappingers Falls, there was Seth's Garrison music teacher waiting for him at 8:45 p.m. on a Friday night to make sure that he would feel comfortable walking into that strange school. That's the kind of a faculty and staff we have in this school. And that's another program that we need to protect by passing this budget. So let me be clear, we need to pass this budget so that we don't go into a contingency budget. We need to do that. But let me be clear about something else. It saddens me that we are balancing our budget and maintaining our program on the backs of our teachers and administrators who care so much about our kids that they're willing to give back to make this happen. The budgeting process that our local governments goes through each year is one way that we as a community express our values. Again, it doesn't surprise me, but it saddens me that apparently our teachers in this school care more about making sure that our kids have a great education than some of my neighbors do. So yes, let's support this budget. Let's get this done so that we don't go into a contingency. But let's think long and hard next year about what it is that we want our program to look like and how we want to make sure that we maintain a great school for the future. My kids are gone next year. They're both going to be at Hal-Dane. It was a great relief to get that email from Dr. Benante this afternoon to see that both of my kids could go to Hal-Dane next year. But I want to maintain that not just for my kids, but for all the kids coming up behind them. We have a great community here, a great school, and I hope that we can find a way to keep that going many, many years in the future. Thank you.
Next up, I have, excuse me, Delmar Carlin. Pardon me if I mispronounced your name, sir.
Good evening. I'm Delmar Carlin, a resident, longtime resident of Garrison. I'm really here just to make one simple suggestion. I listened to the last board meeting and the report on the construction project or whatever you call it. And one of the things that the presenter from the company said was that, if I understood him right, it looks like there will be $200,000 left in the contingency. And if they don't replace certain heaters, hot water heaters, which he said were not necessary to replace, there would be another $200,000. What I wanted to do is suggest that you try to find some way to take that $400,000 and apply it to the budget to keep the taxes down and to keep the programs as best you can. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Debbie Earl.
Good evening. I stand before you tonight speaking on behalf of myself and myself only. My name, for those of you that don't know, is Debbie Earl, and I have been a teacher here at Garrison for the last 24 years. I have literally taught here more than half of my life. In the years that I've been teaching here, I have seen administrators come and go. And in fact, since I started here back in 1998, I have seen 16, yes, I said 16, administrators come and go from this little school. And with each new administrator comes new ideas, new priorities and new initiatives. And my dedicated colleagues shift their practices day in and day out with each and every one of them. I'm here tonight to implore the people of this community that either voted no or on the fence with your decision to please look at what's being presented this evening and consider voting yes. A contingency budget will decimate our school. I know this because I am a taxpayer in a district that went to contingency last year. The effects were devastating. I voted yes for that budget even though my taxes are extraordinary and my last child will be graduating this year. Why? Because I'm grateful for the people who voted yes in years past that helped my kids have a great educational experience. Now I want to pay that forward to the other families who want the same quality education for their children. If we go to a contingency budget, I want you to understand from a staff member what we will lose. We will lose the best psychologist our school's ever known. Someone who has implemented and been recognized throughout Putnam and Westchester for programs and initiatives, one that's being cut if it's, if it goes to contingency, that have literally saved the emotional well-being of many of our students. The emotional health and well-being of our students is not something that should even be considered in a budget cut. And I think we can all agree that after the tragedy that we saw in Texas yesterday, the idea of a school without a psychologist is incomprehensible. We will lose our beloved art teacher who pours his heart and soul into the children of this school and who initiates projects and programs that are beyond the scope of anything you would see in a normal elementary and middle school. Projects like the totem pole, if you didn't see them in the hallway, they're out there now, go look at them, they're amazing, that you see lining the breezeway right now. Programs like the one we're doing right now in conjunction with the Garrison Arts Center, which gives our students the opportunity to create art while interacting with the environment around them. It has been proven time and time again through countless studies that students who actively participate in arts education are twice as likely to read for pleasure, are four times more likely to be recognized for academic achievement, have strengthened problem-solving and critical thinking skills, and are four times more likely to participate in a math and science fair. What a loss that would be. We will lose our entire music program. And when you see the concert tomorrow night, you will see how much of a loss that will be for our children. You will see kids who might otherwise go unnoticed up on a stage shining with talent. Our students will lose the opportunity to form connections between music and other school subjects. We will lose our environmental education teacher who helped to make our first K-8 Youth Climate Summit happen this year. The person I watch kids gravitate to in every single grade because of her magnetic personality and superior knowledge of science. We will also lose a classroom teacher who year after year has helped our upper elementary students learn how to develop their skills and become avid readers, writers, mathematicians and scientists. To the many people who voted no for the budget, it's my understanding that this is about saving some money and nor making a statement of dissatisfaction. A no vote doesn't hurt the people you're trying to send a message to. Trust me, it doesn't. This hurts my colleagues, the ones who I've watched throughout this pandemic, put the children of this building ahead of themselves and oftentimes their families. The ones who attend after-hour games and recitals of their students. The ones who dig into their own pockets to buy things to celebrate special events like our luau day tomorrow that the kids are gonna have a blast with. The ones who stay up at night thinking about ways to help their students who are struggling either academically or emotionally. The ones who agreed to take a 0% salary increase next year to help keep the integrity of this school intact. The ones we're going to lose when they look elsewhere for job security. The ones who I can promise you, standing here today in the last 24 years of my life, are the most dedicated and talented people I have ever met. Please consider all the things that I've mentioned tonight and vote yes at our next budget vote. Our students will be better for it.
Next, I have Patty Klubnik.
Okay. So I'm much better speaking to everyone. And I think I know a little bit about whence I speak. I, I'm a retired Garrison School teacher. Some of you know me, some of you have never heard of me. I taught here for 30 years. I retired eight years ago. I know this entire staff, even the new teachers. I sent, I sent a number of them text messages this morning. Telling them, I was giving them strength and support to come in this morning to face the children who were terrified to come to school today. I have grandchildren. I even lived in Garrison at one point. I was a resident, homeowner, taxpayer. So I really get it. I get it. I get it. I get why the taxpayers are upset. I do. But I also see the other side to the story. What makes Garrison the gem on the Hudson, the blue ribbon school, are its teachers, its staff and its programs. First, Jess, our psychologist, I will cry now. She is such a gem. How could you do without a school psychologist? How could you even dream of doing without a school psychologist and especially an exemplary school psychologist? So Jess dealt with Sandy Hook. The day Sandy Hook happened, Jess dealt with the students, she dealt with us teachers, she helped us to help our students. Kids crying all over the place, of course. On a very personal note, I'm gonna have to say this really fast so I won't lose it. So I was engaged while I was here. Half my class was invited to the wedding. Everyone was so happy for me because most of the kids in the school knew me. Unfortunately, my fiance died of a massive heart attack before the wedding. Who held my class together? Who held the kids in this school together who were sobbing for their teacher? Jess, our school psychologist. Now, that's one of many, 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 many things she does on a daily basis. She's helped hundreds of children. I've watched her. I've admired her. I've respected her, I still do. Next person I have to speak about is our art teacher. Garrison is all about the arts. That's why people move to Garrison. I know, I still live just up the road. I grew up in Colsway. Garrison is art. That's what Garrison's all about. That's why people choose to buy homes here. That's why people choose to live here. Culture and outstanding art teacher. How could you even dream of going to a contingency budget and eliminating art, psycho, the psychologists? And music, music! What are schools about if they don't have music? No singing in the halls? No, no spring concert? No winter concert? Please, please. I can understand why people are worried about money. I am too. I'm a homeowner now in Beacon. But don't take it out on the kids and the teachers because that's who will really be suffering from this. And the last thing I want to say is after last night and after what happened yesterday in Texas, I've been thinking all day today about what happened? What was the best thing that people could do for, for children at the time? And I kept thinking about Mr. Rogers. And I know he had already retired when September 11th happened. He was convinced, persuaded, even though his health was not good, to come back and do a special to talk to children in the United States. And one thing he said, I remember too well, when my mommy knew I was scared about scary things that happened, she told me, "Look to the helpers. There are always helpers." Today, when your students, when your children, your grandchildren, your neighbor's kids walked into this school, the helpers were the teachers, the faculty, the staff. They will always be here to be the helpers. So please, pass this budget. Thank you.
Before I call the next person up, I just want to remind everyone to please follow the board policy. We're trying to stay to three minutes. I'm gonna let it go. Please try not to name individuals. That is our policy. I, I'm not gonna interrupt anyone tonight. I'm sorry, I'm barely holding it together and I can't do that. I'm sorry. Chantel, I'm sorry, DeWiler, I apologize for mispronouncing names. Thank you.
I don't know if I'm breaking the rules by telling this story, but I am new to Garrison. My son is six years old and he is in first grade. He has an illness that has kept him from being in his classroom for three months. He cannot perform academically because his illness holds him back. The only people in this school who've been able to get him through these past three months are people who are being eliminated in this budget. The school psychologist has dedicated time and effort just to get him through an hour a day when he can't go in the classroom. His art teacher, I can't, I have two children and every day is a struggle just to get them through. But this school has given my son something that I don't think he can get anywhere else. And if you cut this budget anymore, I don't think he can even function. He needs art. He needs psychologists. He needs the resources that this school brings. You're not cutting fun that's not necessary. You are hurting academics. You are making it so children like my son, who is very smart, can actually function and get through and learn what he needs to learn. This is a very important, important vote. We need this community to ban behind these children. Children who are successful in school bring back to the community. Children who are successful in school bring back to the community. It's not just for the parents or the teachers or the kids. It's also for all of you. Think about the people in your lives who have come out of this district. What good have they done in this community? What have they brought to this community? And don't think art isn't part of an important education for our children. It supports design, architecture, engineering. There's so much more to what these teachers and the support staff are doing for our children that actually help them grow into good human beings and good members of our society and contributors to our community. It is very important that we do not go into this contingent budget. Not just for my son. That's just one story. I'm sure many of you have others, and maybe you will have stories in the future you don't know yet. Please, please, pass this budget.
If you'd like to come sign up.
Yeah, I got the rest.
Okay. Very quickly, thank you to the board for the work you've done in finding something. You clearly listened to the community. I've had a lot of conversations with members of the community who voted against the budget a week ago. And one of the things I heard again and again was, please show that we, the people who voted against this budget, have been heard. Please show that you've heard us. And it's clear that you've heard those people. And I think that's... I commend you for that. I don't like this new budget. I like the old budget, but I understand how we got here. And I will support it. My colleagues on the PTA support it. We are rounding up a lot of other people who support it. And I also just want to say that one of the teachers who spoke earlier said that you're not in this for the glory, but you deserve a little glory. I think what you're going through now, what we've been through the last two years, you deserve some glory. I thank you. I know a lot of other people do. Thank you very much. And the administration, the raises you're foregoing are... It directly goes to our pockets. I mean, it's very clear to look at the math and see, well, you're gonna freeze your salaries so then our taxes don't go up so much. We just have to thank you for that. So, we do. I do. Thank you.
Do I have any further public comment this evening? Just come sign in, please.
Kind of tall. Anyway, probably loud enough. No?
Justin Flory. Thank you.
It's only fair, right?
Okay. Thank you. I'm Betsy Calhoun, and my view is a little bit different. I realize that this didn't just happen this year. This is the result of not ever saving any money for the future. It has to be that way. I mean, why otherwise would it be so dire? I think that there are certain people who should probably be let go for expecting too much of some things and of not doing a really good financial job. The other thing I'd like to mention is, the contingency budget is very, very serious. Unpleasant. Unnecessary. But there is a state mandate of 2.2%, I believe. And there's no reason why that can't be the goal for the new budget that's coming up. So it's a background of not planning ahead. It's the state mandate that you can work toward, and that would be a reasonable raise of everybody's taxes the way it's always been. Why you think Garrison is so special that it can just go on and ask and ask and ask, it's too much. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other further public comment this evening? Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment this evening, the first section of it. And I will move to President's remarks, which is up next. I'll be honest, I don't have a lot this evening. I do want to note a couple things. The first is, for the board, on June 21st, we are going to look to hold our meeting to ratify the vote directly after the results. That will be a late night. I don't need everybody, but if you could please get back to me and let me know so that we can see if we have a quorum. This will mean we don't have to come back another night that week to ratify the vote. I want to say that I appreciate hearing from everyone. And just wanted to address a couple of things while we can't respond to public comment in the moment. I'd like to point out that if you have questions, please come forward. The administration has made themselves available. For example, the construction contingency budget legally can only be used on the construction project. It cannot touch our operating budget by law. We have looked at all of our legal options. We have consulted with our legal counsel when preparing both the first budget and the second budget and the contingency budget. But if you have questions or ideas, please come forward. Ask them either here, come set up a meeting with Carl and Joe. They're happy to answer any questions you may have as to what's in this budget, what's not in this budget. All right. I think that's all I've got for you guys this evening in terms of my remarks. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Carl.
Thank you, Sarah. I just want to say thank you to all of you for coming out this evening. Many of the faces in this audience have been coming out for three months, working on this budget process, and it has been difficult and challenging. And some evenings, it's been grueling. But you've stayed with us, and I think we are in the right place with tonight's recommendation. We do respect everyone's right to come out and vote, but we feel very strongly about preserving quality education for children. First and foremost, I need to thank Haldane, my counterpart Phil Benante, and the Haldane Board really, really came through for us. When this budget was not supported by the Garrison community, the Haldane Board made a significant concession. Under state ed, they can charge us a lot more money for our students. And not only did they drop the tuition to what we are able to afford, they're also protecting us with a multi-year deal. That's significant. The GTA deserves tremendous thanks. They've been partners and understanding all the way through. And I deeply appreciate you coming to our meetings, you understanding the situation we are in, and the concession that you made with regards to your compensation. The admin team, I can't ask for a more competent administrative team. And I know, one of the first things during a budget crisis, from doing this for 33 years, is that people look towards administration. Yes, we are the highest-paid employees of the district, but you have a very, very competent admin team. And I appreciate that they are taking a full salary freeze. And I know the board appreciates that as well, and they've expressed it over and over. And lastly, I'm gonna talk about this seven-member board because they have put more hours than any board I have ever worked with. Sarah, as president, her leadership has been incredible. She's been there lobbying, our state representatives, negotiating with our two high school districts, countless hours. Our finance committee members and the entire seven-member board, they have put hundreds and hundreds of hours. They have went through this budget line by line. If there were other ways to protect the taxpayers, we would have found that. We went out with a 9% because that's what was needed. And now, because we got a concession from Haldane, because we got concessions from the employees, made a few other cuts that are not devastating, they're not what we would like to do, but they are helpful. And now we're able to get out there with 6.6 because we did listen to those voters who voted no and tried to understand what tax levy increase could they potentially support. So that is how we landed on a 6.6 budget. But I will tell you, I am worried about contingency. And I've worked in four school districts, and there has never been a district that would lose the amount of program and staff and services for children than this district would lose. Nowhere do you see a school without music, without art, without mental health support. You just don't see it. And so I have to say that we're trying to preserve quality for children. And I hope we've demonstrated that in our actions, in our communication to you. And the last thing I will say is, there was a lot of misinformation out there. And people who claim they understand schools and budgets have spread misinformation. And I would encourage you to come directly to Joe Jimmick or me. We made ourselves available. We met in person. We had phone conferences. Anyone who really legitimately wanted to understand why we are in this situation has come forward, and they've gotten very clear and good information. So if you're going to vote, I would ask you to at least vote with accurate and real information and not voting on gossip. Because there's been quite a bit of gossip out there, and those people were not at our meetings, and they did not reach out to Joe or me. So our door is open. We will make the time, morning, afternoon, or evening. And I give you my word on that. So please, if you hear misinformation, encourage those people to come forward and get accurate information from us. And that is all.
Thank you. We will now move on to old business. The first item on old business is a request for approval to establish a pre-kindergarten program. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Garrison Union Free School District does hereby establish a pre-kindergarten program effective the start of the 2022-2023 school year in accordance with New York State Education Law, and be it further resolved that the Board authorizes the funding and staffing of said pre-kindergarten program. May I have a motion, please?
Moved.
Thank you. Carl, do you want to speak to this a little bit specifically with regards to how the money is coming from the state and will not... It brings in money, right?
Absolutely. For the first time, Garrison did receive state funding for a pre-K program. So it is funding that comes in on a per-pupil basis. Three weeks ago, we put out a survey to make sure there was enough interest before we moved forward. And there was a very strong response to the survey, not only from parents of younger children, but at least 15 parents of eligible children, residents of Garrison, who sold us that they were willing to attend pre-K in September. So with that, we would be able to access funding. And just to be clear again, this funding is use it or lose it. So if we don't run the program, you cannot access the funding. But if we do go forward, we can get this per-pupil allocation that Garrison is entitled to. It's a positive program for our young children. It would be aligned with our curriculum. And a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for this district to roll out a pre-K program in September. So I do strongly recommend this to the board. I think it is a positive thing for our district, our community, and first and foremost, our children.
Your question, Madeline?
Just to be clear, this is funded by the state? And what happens with a contingency budget? It will save one teacher position, right? Even if we go to a contingency, it will save one teacher position?
That is correct, Madeline. We would, no matter what, have access to the funding. And the good news is, on contingency, there would be one teacher cut. But if we go forward with the pre-K program, it would remain at one. Without the pre-K program, it would potentially be two teachers cut.
So right now, the contingency budget, we're losing eight positions with contingency. If we don't approve this, we will be losing nine.
That is correct. Yes.
And there will also be an aide pulled in to run the pre-kindergarten program as well, so it goes to 10. All right. Do I have any other questions regarding the pre-kindergarten program? I know we've talked about this repeatedly over the weeks. Carl, could you actually just talk a little bit while we have people here about when this will roll out and when registration will open?
Sure. Sure. We will... Well, the first step is, we have a cap of 18 students for pre-K. And we set that cap. You could go as high as 20, but we decided 18 with one paraprofessional. With that, if we have, for example, 20 students that are eligible and those parents apply, then we need to move to a lottery. And we would select the first 18 names out of a hat, basically. The other two families would be on a waiting list. So the first step would be tomorrow, we will open up an application that'll remain open for approximately 10, maybe to 12 days. After that, if we have 18 or less, everyone will be admitted. But if we have more, we'll hold a lottery, and then we will notify parents shortly afterwards. So parents will know by mid-June whether or not they have a secure spot in our pre-K program for September.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please, on this?
Second.
Thank you. All right. Without any further ado, then, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays. Abstentions. Okay. Next, we will move on to a request for approval of change orders. Hudson 007, Hudson 008, Hudson 009. Whereas the school district entered into a contract with Hudson Valley Electrical Construction Management Contractor dated June 3, 2021, for the performance of electrical work in connection with the school district's reconstruction project, and whereas the school district desires and/or requires the addition of services and/or materials to be performed by contractor in connection with the project. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Garrison Union Free School District approves change order numbers Hudson 007, Hudson 008, and Hudson 009, which are attached to this resolution, authorizes the President of the Board of Education or the Superintendent of Schools to execute such change order on behalf of the school district, and ratifies any action already taken by either of them in that regard, and further authorizes and ratifies all actions taken by the Board President, Superintendent of Schools, or either of their designees to effectuate the requirements of the change order. May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Thank you. Do I have any questions regarding the change orders as presented? We looked at these a little bit last time, so I'm just gonna go ahead and move to a vote unless there's any questions. All right. All in favor?
Comment.
Oh, excuse me. A comment from our head of facilities committee.
These change orders include material that will allow us to complete some of the security measures over the summer so that by the time the school year begins, we'll have secure doors, locks, all of which are part of the project, single entrance. What am I missing from that list?
Cameras.
Cameras. Yeah. It'll all be done by the time the school opens for the new school year, especially in light of national news.
Thank you, Matt. Any other students' comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays. Abstentions. Abstentions? I'm going to move on to requests for approval of change orders. Total 003, total 004. Whereas the school district entered into a contract with Total Construction Corp. Contractor dated June 3, 2021, for the performance of general plumbing work in connection with the school district's reconstruction project, and whereas the school district desires and/or requires the addition of services and/or materials to be performed by contractor in connection with the project. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Garrison Union Free School District approves change order numbers Total 003 and Total 004, which are attached to this resolution, authorizes the President of the Board of Education or the Superintendent of Schools to execute such change order on behalf of the school district, and ratifies any action already taken by either of them in that regard, and further authorizes and ratifies all actions taken by the Board President, Superintendent of Schools, and either of their designees to effectuate the requirements of the change order. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Do I have any questions or comments following these change orders? Again, these were looked at the previous week, and we just sent them back to the Facilities Committee for further review, and now they're coming back. Okay? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? Next, we have a request for approval of change orders. Meyer 030, Meyer 31, Meyer 33. Whereas the school district entered into a contract with Meyer Contracting Corporation dated June 3, 2021, for the performance of general construction work in connection with the school district's reconstruction project, and whereas the school district desires and/or requires the addition of services and/or materials to be performed by contractor in connection with the project. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Garrison Union Free School District approves change order numbers Meyer 28, Meyer 29, Meyer 30, Meyer 31, Meyer 32, and Meyer 33, which are attached to this resolution, authorizes the President of the Board of Education or the Superintendent of Schools to execute such change orders on behalf of the school district, and ratifies any action already taken by either of them in that regard, and further authorizes and ratifies all actions taken by the Board President, Superintendent of Schools, or either of their designees to effectuate the requirements of the change order. May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Do I have any questions or comments? Again, these are coming back to us after a review from the Facilities Committee. Okay? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? Thank you, Facilities Committee, for your time this week. We now come to our second public comment section. Oh, excuse me, I forgot the new business. My apologies. New business. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Garrison Union Free School District hereby approves a memorandum of agreement by and between the district and the Garrison Teachers Association dated May 25, 2022, for a successor collective bargaining agreement, hereby authorizes the superintendent to execute said agreement. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do I have any questions or comments on this agreement? On behalf of the Board, thank you very much. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? I will now move to item 10, the second public comment section for this evening. If you wish to speak, the microphone remains open. I just ask that you please come and sign in. The same policy applies. Thank you. If you don't mind, just introducing yourself at the microphone for me. I'd appreciate it.
Hello, I'm Dan Jasnow. I'm a Garrison resident. Just have a couple of comments about the pre-K program. Our daughter is eligible for the program this year. We filled out the survey. But we're still, we initially didn't get much information about the program. Our daughter is enrolled at the NEST where she is full-time. And I think we initially heard about the program through the newspaper rather than through the NEST. I would just comment that the NEST obviously has a lot of families in the Garrison District that I think would be interested in hearing more about it. It's also a very big decision for us whether to go into the pre-K program versus staying at the NEST. Among other things, it's, you know, a full day, eight to nine hours versus a five-hour program. You know, transportation considerations, all sorts of things. So I know that this is all moving very quickly for you guys as well, and, you know, you're under a lot of pressure with various other things. But to the extent that there can be more information or an orientation program or any other sort of outreach to families that are not currently in the district or, you know, are going to be enrolled, who are maybe not in the message boards or list services or emails, that would be very helpful. Be great to connect with some other parents that might be in the pre-K or thinking about the pre-K program and facing similar issues as us. But yeah, anything you can do to help her, you know, especially in the next 10 to 12 days when the application will be open. But thank you all very much.
Thank you. Do I have any further public comment this evening? Just introduce yourself wherever you want to go, please.
Hi, I'm Lisa Rassik. I am a parent of a sixth grader and an eighth grader. First, I'll say that I don't think I'm the person to do this. I think that there are other people who could probably speak much better to each of the points that I'm going to get to. But since the Board actually cannot respond to some of the questions that have been raised tonight, I'm going to do my best to address them, if that is okay. Does that work? Okay. So I did hear, I think the Board did mention at one point, but I just want to reiterate because I heard it last week, too, in the presentation from Tetra Tech, that there may be an opportunity for some savings along the way. But I just want to reiterate that from what I understand and what I think I heard again tonight, any potential for savings that may be there cannot be used for the school operational budget. Can't happen. Two separate things. If there's savings there, it doesn't do anything to help us with the modified budget that the Board, that Carl, I'm sorry, Mr. Albano, the Board has presented tonight. Am I, okay? Cool. Okay. Secondly, thirdly, fourthly, there's some concern out there that maybe past boards, past administrations, because I certainly cannot say that about this Board and this administration, may not have been careful enough in their budgeting and the way they were managing the school, that maybe they didn't prepare enough savings in case there was a need like this. So, and then there's a question about why isn't 2.2% again enough? And I'll just again reiterate what I have heard and read from these presentations that have been published in the paper, that have been, that are available actually on the GUF's website. So from what I see is that the types of increases that the school has been faced with this year, just like, yes, like the types of increases that many of us in our personal lives have been, you know, that we've had to face this year, we did not anticipate. Did we anticipate 8% inflation? Anyone? Maybe. Maybe after we hit the COVID pandemic, we thought, okay, there's a chance. I don't think the Board anticipates, and again, I don't have the numbers in front of me, so, but I stand to be corrected. I believe that transportation costs went up 12%. Did anyone anticipate that? Could anyone anticipate a 12% in transportation cost? No, I don't think so. Benefits for teachers, for administration. Benefits have, my personal benefits have been going up, like skyrocketing, just over the past couple of years. My husband is self-employed, runs a small business. I understand how these costs lately, recently, have taken a bigger and bigger bite. So it's not, I mean, I'm talking about things that are surprising, but these kind of increases that you see like this, that this is not something that I don't think that the school could have prepared for. Reserves. I know that I've read some concerns in the newspaper from letters to the editor that why doesn't Garrison just tap the reserve? So I did hear that, yes, that is going to happen. That reserve has been tapped to the benefit, for the benefit of our students over the past two years. I have, I'm lucky that I'm able to maintain a very close, a pretty wide-ranging group of friends who are either in New York City, they're on Long Island, they're in Connecticut. I have family in Oklahoma. These kids have not been in school. My story was absolutely unique. People are asking, oh, what were your kids doing, you know, last fall, last spring? You know where my kids were? They were here, in class, maintaining grade level. My kids are in an amazing, like, amazing place because they were in school. That's thanks to the teachers showing up. It's thanks to the administration showing up. It's thanks to our Board showing up. I'm sorry, that's three minutes. I'm sure of it. But in any case, I don't think that anyone, actually, there were some health experts who did. But you know what? No one could predict a COVID pandemic that has upended our lives and impacted cost in a way that none of us have seen. So I really don't think it's fair to blame them. And it's certainly not fair to put this on the backs of our children. Not the children who are in the school today, not the children who are in the school next year and the year after that. Because as, as we've seen full well, if this school is gutted, this is not something that you just bounce back from in one year. This is our community for years.
Thank you. Please just come sign in and then introduce yourself. Just say your own name out there.
Hi, my name is Lauren Benares. I have two children in the district, Zoe and Susanna, and ages in grades six and three. And I'm president of GSEF as well. I feel like for anybody that didn't have a child in school during COVID, it might be impossible to understand just how life path-altering what this school did for our kids was. I, like Lisa, know no one else whose children were able to be in school, physically present, and developing in the way that a child needs to develop. If ever there was reason to use a rainy day fund that no one could predict, that is it. And I, you know, keeping an idea that what's worked before should still be working now, everything is different. Nothing is the same. And I don't think that we can possibly move forward if that's the bar that we're making all of our decisions with. The fact of the matter is Garrison has needed higher school taxes for a long time. And reserves that shouldn't have been used for the school were used so that we didn't have to ask taxpayers to raise taxes when we really needed it. So when you see a 9.2% ask, that's because we haven't been asking for anything for a decade when we should have. And so it's a huge number. It's an unpalatable number. But there are reasons that it exists. And honestly, I think we should pay attention to the fact that we were willing to use that money because on school, because we were afraid that the community wouldn't support a higher tax rate at other times, which is why we've avoided it and avoided it and avoided it. And at some point, it comes crashing down. The goal of, I feel like, not just parents, every society should be, when you leave, when you pass on something to your children, it should be better than what you had. I can't say this for a fact, but I would be willing to bet that 95% of the people sitting in this room had music when they were in elementary school, had an art class when they were in elementary school, went on a field trip. That's what we're talking about. It's that bad. So I just, I hope that everybody has their eyes really open when you vote, because it means the world, to the world, to so many people. And if, I mean, given yesterday, the idea of having a school without a psychologist to me is like negligent. So that's it. Thank you.
You. And you.
Thank you. Do I have any further comment this evening?
Good evening. My name is Howard Davis, and I'm a resident of Garrison, as all of you, or most of you are, and have the, had the pleasure of having my kids go through this school. And I see many of the teachers looking back, and all of which were instrumental in their, where they are now, and their successors. This has always been an incredible school. And we are so blessed to have grown our kids here, who are now graduates of college and off to their next endeavors. And I'm not going to give you too many details, but they're amazing. The predicament that we're in is of no fault of our own. There's been many who are more articulate and maybe having their kids currently at the school, passionate about the need to support education and what that does, and that we must do that. There's a question that I have, and not related to the expense side, but to the state's support for Garrison. And I'm sorry, I came a bit late, so I missed the presentation. And maybe there was some further discussion about what the state did and did not do with regard to supporting education in Garrison. And I don't know if I can just ask the question of how much of a decrease there was in the state's aid to Garrison for this year and the impact that that had on the budget shortfall? Is that something that is known?
We don't generally respond to comment, but we will get you that answer, and it is a more detailed answer in terms of how much the state affects the aid.
And the reason I think it's important is that we're, from what I understand, unique, that most schools got increases while Garrison did not. And I want to just suggest the dichotomy that's going on, in that the state is supporting the payment for increased parkland in Garrison and in Phillips Town, while it is apparently not supporting the important and critical aspects of paying for education. not supporting the important and critical aspects of paying for education. And so the question really is for the board, what kind of lobbying? How hard are we pushing? And what can we do more than we're doing, and we can't just take no? So who is it, all of our legislators, and we'll talk of local, state, federal, are all supporting and have given significant amounts of money for parkland? Let's go to them, and each of us make calls, along with, with our board, to advocate as voters of them, of, of here, the, that there needs to be a consideration and understanding. They need to support education, and Garrison can't be the outlier, and encourage everyone to make those calls. Thank you.
Do I have any further comment this evening, public? Yes, you want to come sign in? No, just go sign in.
But I don't have the details about if the budget were at 2.2%, which is the mandate the state has given to schools. What would that, what would those numbers be?
You're asking how?
How much of the, what would the budget be?
We will get back to you with an answer to your question. We don't respond to comment. Thank you.
And let me add, although we're not doing Q and A, we have on the website, for, for everyone who may be interested, there is a complete history of the development of the budget and a lot of detailed information. So for example, something like that could be found on the website, our loss of state aid is, is in prior presentations. So I do encourage people to go to the website, again, a source of accurate information as opposed to, you know, informal discussions. Please, website or, or give us a call, but we will give you an answer to that question.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any further comment this evening? Okay, thank you very much. I'm now going to close public comment, and I am going to move to board member comment and other discussion. Jocelyn, you were up first.
Okay. Thanks to everyone who's actually stayed through both public comments and gets to hear the board members who get to give ones, so it'll be brief because I see that you're all sitting here still. Thank you so much to the admin and faculty and staff who have agreed to freeze their pays. It's something I never, ever would have wanted to ask you all, nor anyone sitting in this audience, actually, right? Everyone deserves the increases that they are usually entitled to. I want to thank also the board members for working together with each other on this. And while I think a lot of the messaging was, you know, we listened to the community and we heard the no votes, so we're coming back with a lower, a lower budget ask. I also want to say that I, I also heard a lot of the yes votes. There's a lot of you out there, and I thank you, and I hope that you band together and work together as a board member. I can't do it as a community organizer, I want to do it, but I have a lot of faith in what you put together for the first vote and what you can do again. And I, I, I'm listening to the yes votes because you are voting to keep the programs and to keep the staff and to keep our team together, to keep the puzzle together, like Sarah said. Also, Sarah made me tear up, by the way. So did some, so did some other people. I never thought that would happen. At a board meeting, I mean.
You know, like I've been trying to make you cry for a while.
So thank you so much for dealing with this embarrassing predicament, but I'm looking forward to the revote and thank you.
Next up, I have David.
Yeah, I, I'm the, the oldest in point of service on this board, and I have to say that I have, but only in point of service, of course. But I've never, this is a wonderful board, and we have really, we love being on the board, we love serving with each other. We've really looked at this as carefully as we could have. Sarah's been just an amazing leader of this board, she really has, and, and has done incredible work on a whole range of things, including on the Haldane issue. But I want to first of all express my, my appreciation to Phil Benanti and the, and the Haldane School Board for their very generous willingness to make it possible for us to continue to be in a community, because we are a community. And we're in a community more than we're in a community with Highland Falls, and it's great to be part of Phillips Town community and be able to send our kids to, to Haldane. So that said, you know, you really only get to know a community or an institution when it's under pressure and how it reacts. And, you know, the, the administration here has been, has just been amazing, they're so good, and they have responded so thoughtfully and carefully to the crisis that we're in right now, and the situation we're in. To the faculty, I just want to say, I'm, I'm, I'm embarrassed too. I mean, I'm ashamed that, that we're asking you to, or that you have offered to take a, a freeze. You're wonderful, you've done a fantastic job for our kids, and, you know, I, I really appreciate on behalf of the board for what you've, what you've done. The other thing I just want to say, and then I'll shut up, is that, you know, as a community, an institution, you know best when it's under pressure. And we have you guys out there, and we have Ned at the PTA, we have Lauren at GSEF, and we have a whole squad of folks out there, and a lot of them are here tonight, who are working really hard to pull this community together. You know, you can sort of see how this works in a place like Ukraine, where it's really come together and defined itself in the face of a, of a terrible challenge. This is a very different order of business, but that's what's happening here. We are, we are defining ourselves as a community in response to this problem. We are not a, we are not a collection of individual taxpayers unrelated to each other. We are people who care about, care about each other, care about our children, and I just can't tell you how much I appreciate those of you who are out there every day trying to figure out how we're going to win this vote.
Thank you.
I'll keep it brief. I want to thank the community, the teachers, you guys are great. I mean, just thinking about those, going through COVID 2020, and what you did then, what you're still doing now, nonstop, showing up for our kids, and now doing this. Thank you. It does sadden me that the Garrison community voted no on education, and you came out to help. So that does mean a lot as a parent personally. Thank you. I want to also thank the administration, the rest of the board members, and for everyone else for showing up here. And we can't as a board unfortunately tell you how to vote outside of this meeting, but this is the only time that we can say please vote yes for education, please vote yes. If this goes to a contingency budget, we lose eight positions, a lot of services, and it's just, we, we can't get there. So I'm pleading for help and hoping that the Garrison community votes yes, yes on education.
Thank you. Next, Courtney.
I can really only echo what my fellow board members have already said and comments still to come. There aren't enough thank yous out there for everything that everybody has done, from the teachers and how hard you work and what you have offered to the community who has been out here for hours and hours and hours over the last several months, listening to our presentations and questions and answers, and to everybody who is working hard to get out the vote. I look forward to getting back to the celebration of our school, hopefully very soon. I'm really excited to come to the concert tomorrow night to hear from the students who went to NISMIA next week. I can't wait to hear more about the amazing climate summit that happened last week. I believe it was our, the country's first ever K through eight climate summit, and that the whole school was a part of. These are the things that make our school really special, and we don't want to lose it. Thanks.
Kent?
Obviously, it's been an emotional week, emotional night here. You'd have to be a robot not to feel the energy in the crowd and just how much this means to everybody. I've certainly felt my range of emotions, disappointment, frustration, fear, but I want to focus on an emotion I'm feeling right now, which is really feeling grateful to our community and our school community, and that's a big community. Our teachers, obviously, I mean, I don't know what, what more we can add to the appreciation for what you all are putting on the line for us and for the community administration, all the work you do, selflessly sacrificing your pay increase. Really importantly, our, our high school partners at Highland Falls and Fort Montgomery and Overton O'Neill, huge part of our community, and they, they, they should not be overlooked here. They came to us, and we work with them on Deal First, and you, the community has generously voted to approve that, and we're excited about that. And then finally, Haldane, which, you know, obviously has been a very challenging thing for us, working through tuition with them. Really can't thank their board and Dr. Benanti enough for that. And then, like David said, the folks that are working really hard to figure out how to, to get this thing through. You know, all of them have one real big thing in common, and that's everybody selflessly wants to put the children first, and that's the most important thing here. No matter what you think about the 6.6 number, no matter what you think about what we should have done in the past, none of that matters if a contingency budget passes, because that hurts children first. Obviously, it hurts teachers, it hurts admin, it hurts a ton of people. But first and foremost, it hits children today, tomorrow, and like Sarah said, it's, it's going to gut this school, and it's going to gut it for a long time. So again, like, I don't, and actually, Madeline, I don't know if we can say we, to vote for it or not. Obviously, I don't think you have to guess how I feel, but I just would urge, urge everybody to think of the children, think of the, the, the support they need, what, what they're given here at this school, and to really make your decision based on that, first and foremost.
Thank you. Matt?
The perils of going late in the alphabet here, that I don't want to repeat everything exactly as you said it, but go for it. I want to triple, second?
Somebody used to be in charge of what the order was.
I know, I know, I have myself to blame.
Yeah.
I just want to quadruple underline the thank yous to everybody, especially the teachers. I want to say how inspired I am by the engagement from everybody in the process, in the dialogue, and in the mobilization. And I don't want to dwell on the past, but just on the spending point, I want to say how actively proud I am of the money we spent in August of 2020. It was a very intentional and active decision, and a few folks have already articulated how important it was. But I, I don't really feel defensive about it at all. I think it's one of the things I'm most proud of in my life, is that we, we supported the, in school engagement, it pales in comparison to what you all did to make that happen. You know, just heroes of the century on that. And then we also supported students who were unable to come in because of vulnerability to the virus and family vulnerability. So that's where that money went, and I want to look ahead, not back, but the two are connected to some degree. But that's a much less important point than the point about right now. I echo your word of gratitude and thank everybody in the community for talking this through in such an extraordinarily respectful, civil, but also specific way. So thanks to everyone, especially the teachers, thank you, and the administration.
Thank you. All right, I'll finish up this evening, because I am last in the alphabet. I want to thank both high schools who have been working with us to renegotiate these contracts. This will set us up well for the future and ensure we can keep the children in their high school of choice. They have both worked to put our students first, and they value our students. Our students are doing great things over there. I hope next time we'll have a list of where they're going to college, so we have some positive things to look forward to. Just a note on the finance, I do sit on both the finance and the audit committees. I've also been coming to board meetings long before I ran for the board, and there has always been a financial cliff. We couldn't continue to fund the school with the amount we were raising, it was not possible. We've delayed this decision as long as we could, and the rising costs have brought us to where we are. We are also limited to 4% on undesignated fund balance by the state. We may not keep more than that. We have in the past, and it has shown in our audit reports. And our other designated fund balances are for very specific uses. Again, there's more in that, as Carl said, in the reports. But I would encourage everyone to go and read the internal audit reports, go and read the external audit reports, and look at the finance. If that's where you have questions, look at the financial picture. I was told I was not allowed to read them here tonight to you, but I've read them, these committees have read them, we've perused them, we've met with our external auditors, our internal auditor. We did the internal audit report for a reason, we are not required by New York State, and we did it last year. And it gave us a really good picture of what we need to maintain this school. I also want to speak a little bit to all the positive things that are happening. This is the saddest board meeting I've ever been to and one I hope to never run, and yet there's still a lot of great things happening in our district. The climate summit was fantastic. I, I am so sorry I was not able to be there, but I've watched the videos of the speeches and seen the pictures, and I'm just so impressed at the experience this community was able to support and the teachers put together. So thank you. It is so wonderful this year that we've been able to use the wonderful resource we have of the school forest and connect it directly to curriculum. That's a lot of work. That doesn't happen overnight, and our teachers already had a lot on their plate, so it's great that we've been able to do that. And then I also, I really do hope everyone takes my invitation, whether you have a kid in the school or not, to come to the concert tomorrow and be a part of what's happening here. Our doors are open again, so please come in, please come hear what the students can do, and, you know, be a part of our community. I'm really excited for that, so. And again, thank you, teachers, thank you, admin, for all your countless hours. I don't know if you guys, these admin, Carl and Joe work with us throughout the weekends, whenever I'm available, they make the time to help us solve these problems. So I'm really grateful for that. All right, I'm a little rambling a little bit, but thank you so much. Okay, I think we're going to move on now? Anybody had any follow-up, any other comment, questions? Okay, we're going to go, we do not have reason to go back into executive session, so we are going to go to adjournment. Be resolved that the Board of Education of the Garrison Union Free School District hereby adjourns a special meeting of May 25th, 2022. May I have a motion, please?
Some.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays, abstentions. Thank you.